Ready cash?
Yeah. Seven thirty. Kim's almost ready. Hey.
Switching wires a little.
Here's working.
Working.
All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village Planning Commission of Belmont to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Tereski, Meek.
Here.
Kalka.
Here.
Schneider.
Present.
Dyke.
Zender.
Here.
Give you to do approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, approves. Let's take a look for approval of the regular meeting minutes of February 2nd.
Same and they appear to be in accordance with what happened in our last meeting, so I move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass. I see no one here for public comments. And there's no public hearing tonight, so we'll move right on to new business. Planning Commission members up for reappointment. So there's three. Kalka, Meek, and Zender. Our terms are expiring March 31st. All three of us have agreed to be reappointed until, for three more years, until March 31st, 2026. I need to have approval for that?
Motion's as to each. Separate motion for each.
Separate for each.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Please.
May I have a motion for Mr. Kalka, please?
Your term ending March 31st, 2026.
All in favor?
Yes, ask for support.
Support.
For motion.
All in favor?
Staying. I'm staying only because I do the appointing, so I think it's appropriate that I abstain.
Pass.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Staying.
Passes. I want Mr. Zender.
We recommend reappointment of Mr. Zender to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2026.
Support? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Passes. Moving on to master plan update. I'm going to turn this over to Caitlin.
Thank you. So this has been a conversation we've been moving towards in the last couple of months. With me tonight is Alex Rinku. So he will be helping me with the master plan update process as we go through this with the township as well. So if you have any questions, as I'm walking through our proposal, there are some different optional items that we'll discuss. Our goal for tonight's meeting is to essentially look at figuring out what optional items you would like to consider as part of the scope. And then we would move forward with going then to the village council for authorization. So the first part of the process is we'd have a kickoff meeting. We're proposing that to be a joint meeting between the township as well as the village. As many parties that want to be included can be. So if the village council would like to go, that also helps with us just setting a baseline for this major update that is being proposed. And so we'll do some basic training at that meeting. We'll talk about the scope and the pacing of the project and have an idea that everyone's on the same page. Row is in charge of doing a lot of the different notice requirements, so we have those written for the village. The only thing that we ask for assistance with is publishing in the paper because you already have that connection, but we write the notice. So as part of the chapter updates, this is information that would be provided where we would have separate village and township meetings. So we run in parallel with each other. We'd have the introduction updated to reflect updates as we're making changes. Demographic information would be updated now that we have 2020 census information. So it would go from 2010 to 2020. One optional item is to consider doing a housing study. So when we did a 2018 update, we didn't do anything regarding that. And so that's something that you could consider doing to not only evaluate the current condition of your housing stock, but look at those different quality and conditions associated with your housing to help evaluate affordability and things of that nature. So that is one optional item that could be considered, and it would be specific to the village. One of the other base scope items that we would be updating is the natural features section. It already has a lot of that basic information, but it's relatively older graphics and things of that nature with some minor mapping errors. So we're updating that for the village and the township. The existing land use goes over a snapshot of where we are now. The previous plan update in 18, we didn't modify this at all. And so we would propose to update the 2012 information to be the new 2023 information. And so that way we'd have a better snapshot of what things have actually changed from a land use perspective over time. And then we would update the community facilities to align with the updated Parks and Recreation Plan that was updated recently. The second optional item is a utility evaluation. And so the village specifically, you have water and sewer system. And so what we would propose is that you could evaluate this system from a master plan perspective, looking at those three different utilities, water, sanitary, storm. And then we would provide recommendations for your existing system, evaluate potential expansion options as well. So that's something that previously has been talked about sometimes with the township is how do we potentially look at that expansion situation and those different variables? But a lot of it goes back to the capacity of our lagoons in the village overall. And then we have our thoroughfare plan. So we would take information from the road commission and then our GLS, Region Five, planning statistics and things of that nature. Option three is talking about a non-motorized transportation component of that. So more pointing out non-motorized transportation. So that's your pedestrians, your biking, things of that nature. This is something the township also identified as something they wanted to have as an optional item to up. Part of it, looking at the existing inventory of pedestrian walkways and crossways, providing recommendations and then visual concepts to help guide specifically that development. So one of the great things about this potential adding is that we could have a little bit more of a plan associated with when sidewalks should or shouldn't be required as we kind of look at connectivity within the village and have that better prioritize. That could be something that's a larger conversation as part of that master plan. Public engagement is in here. We usually do that in between these stages, but I'll circle back to that in a moment. We have our goals and objectives section. So we did a really thorough job last time during the 2018 update. So don't anticipate many changes. We would reevaluate those based on the redevelopment rate community program that we're engaged with. But essentially, we anticipate that'll be an easy one meeting. One other part is the future land use and implementation plan. So we don't anticipate any major modifications to either one of these specific portions of the master plan. One of the things we've talked about in passing is the potential planned unit development that has a lot of the vacant farmland. And is that the best future outcome of that potential property or not? But another part of this is looking at density and do we want to change our zoning to increase density or not increase density? And so we can have that general discussion as well. Then we have a 63-day review period. And then we would propose to do a joint public hearing. We did that last 2018 cycle. So we all sat together at the high school and kind of went over the plan from a conceptual standpoint and then go through adoptions. Alex, did I miss anything you thought was?
No, not at all.
So is there any questions then about scope so far?
The 63-day period, this looks like a number out of the blue. I'm sure it's not. Is that statutory?
That is statutory.
Okay. And can you indicate to us at this point what the surrounding jurisdictions will be?
Our surrounding jurisdictions to Belmont Township, we go at the also diagonal, so Dryden Township, Emily Township, Bruce Township.
It's interesting if you were going to go south of the county line.
Yes, we would.
So Bruce Township, okay.
That's right.
Yeah. We love them here. Sort of.
It's good to work with your neighbors.
Oh, absolutely. How are you, neighbor? Yeah.
So three of the different public engagement options that we think would be value added to the master plans. We didn't do any major public engagement or consensus in our last 2018 update. And especially with some of the different topics we may be talking about regarding housing as well as utilities and things of that nature. Public input, I think, is a value added at different milestones, especially with a significant update as this. So the first one that was an option is a community survey. The township ranked this as one of the ones they would really like to see happen. We would do paper copies as well as an online version as well. So utilizing social media to kind of push that out, websites. But allowing people, usually you get a larger net of people that are able to respond. That's something that we would develop with the township and the village is that community survey. The next meeting is talking about the community visioning meeting. So this is a two-hour meeting where we help facilitate small group discussions, talking about what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the community. And then we talk about what are our goals for the future. And so we take that small group, those different small group discussions, report out as a group, and have generally a consensus on what's the general vision of where our community wants to go.
What's your position on that issue?
They like this one as well.
Okay.
And then we have the master plan open house. So this is the most expensive, but also the most robust. And so this, unlike the other public engagement, which happens early in the process, this actually happens near the end. Part of it is, is that we'll talk to both communities about what are different things we want to educate the public on or get buy-in on. And so for this, it's having an open house. We will have a bunch of boards explaining concepts and asking for feedback, ask for ranking. Do you think these different, out of these three proposals, what do you think is going to be the most efficient? Do you agree with where we're going to propose to put sidewalks? And this kind of trail path or something of that nature? And so the community is able to have a better critique and a tangible idea of that buy-in on what is this master plan proposing to do? And so for the open house, typically we've done, it's a one-day event, but we do two different two-hour periods. One of them usually during the early afternoon, so those who are not as comfortable driving at the evening hours, those on third shift, things of that nature. And then you have an evening one where the everyday working individual or families or things of that nature would be able to come. And the nice thing about the open house is it's not a meeting setting. It's come in for five minutes, come in for an hour, come in for 30 minutes. And you can kind of go through that survey, fill out your responses and leave. Or if you, we have two planners that go to that, and so we're able to help answer different questions as people go up to a board and say, I don't understand what, what does this term mean or what is this concept? Can you give me more context to it? And so the township also liked this option, but due to different budgetary constraints they weren't aware of at the time, they said, we'd love to do all three, but if we have to pick two, we'll pick the top two and not the third one. So that is something that we're not sure exactly the full with that.
One thing that always catches my attention on all of these is participation rate and do we want to pay that? And we see all the people from the audience right now, like none, which is typical, unfortunately. And usually council meetings, council meetings, the same. So would, does the village have the option of doing the master plan open house if the township does not? And so could we choose to go forward with that if the township does not want to participate then? That's not going to be an option for us either.
So we could split it out. And that's where I want to see what your preference is generally speaking. And then the, my intention then is to probably have a quick conversation between Paul, David, and myself and Alex to talk about how do we want to divide these out? Because it's not 1,200 for each community to do the community survey. It's, it would be divided in half, so yours looking at 600 each. And so that's something that I think we can have that more realistic number discussion. And then, then that's what goes to the legislative bodies, and then we can see how that works. Yep, no problem. And then the item C is talking about our different notices and procedures. So as I said, a lot of this row handles as part of our scope of work. And then lastly is our tentative timeline. So we anticipate the project would take about 10 months. Depending on when we would get started, we'd start off with our kickoff meeting, a few meetings of content, and then we'd move right along. Some things that do impact the tentative schedule are holidays. And so at the kickoff meeting, that's something that we will pace out with each other to talk about. So we don't want our open house to happen in December. It's just not a great season. And so we'll intentionally say we're going to stop the master plan process in October, wait until January to pick it back up and make sure we get that public input. So we'll have that tentative schedule and just keep checking in with each other on moving forward at the same pace. So with that, that's the full scope of the project. And so is, I would ask then, is the planning commission have a leaning towards any of the different optional items regarding scope? So there's the three, talking about the housing study, utility evaluation, and then the non-motorized transportation plan.
I know that I'm favorably inclined towards, I think all three. So the survey and a community vision meeting. And the benefits described sound like positives to me. The only concern would be, do we spend the money if there's not going to be much citizen participation? That's always an issue. But on the other hand, I suppose even from a public relations standpoint, we're giving the community an opportunity to step forward. If they don't, like I said, it's their problem. Don't complain. Don't complain if you don't like it. But yeah, I'm somewhat favorably inclined towards all three. It's just my humble opinion.
I was thinking the same thing and the fact that, you know, if someone sends me a survey and I fill it out, it seems like I never hear any feedback or that I can ask any questions as to what's going on. The visionary meeting, having break into small groups, like you say, we never get a group big enough to even have a small group. However, that master plan open house, if there was anyone that was interested, that one seems to be the one that you could get everything answered. It would be a one-on-one and it would be detailed as to what's happening in all the different areas. And I really like that third one.
I don't know if it's hyperbole or not, to say that the master plan at this point in time, considering everything that's going on, there's a lot going on, whether it's climate change, change in culture, social media aspects, changes with regard to employment, working from home versus going to the office. So many things are in a volatile stage. Or at least some at accelerated stage. And there's so much change going on that from that standpoint, seems to me that the master plan is really important at this point in time. Because I mean, looking down at the future, we don't know what the future is going to look like, but we sure should be taking a look.
Someone wanted to know if we're expanding the industrial park, if we're adding a strip mall someplace, if we're going to start building new subdivisions someplace. And people are concerned, what's going to happen in that field next to me? I mean, that's where you get it answered.
And just talk in terms of potential development projects down the line and keeping your ear to the ground and what might be happening about developing apartment complexes, at least A apartment complex I've heard. So talk about that.
So that people know about it. And we really push the idea of coming to the meeting.
Well, and enough of the rumors that go around that, are we expanding the water treatment plant? Are we not? Are we getting another water tower? That's where people will find out. Maybe we will get participation, but you never know.
Yeah. I guess you don't, you don't know unless you try. It's kind of my attitude. I mean, so even the housing aspect, there's almost no housing available either in terms of purchase. We lost a council member because he couldn't fund a home in the village. Great. And finding a place to rent, good luck. So housing is another dramatic issue. So important.
That's something as far as trying to make sure that we get the best value added on getting the most participants, Row. We've done this before with different communities. So we try to advertise as best we can collaboratively with other organizations and things of that nature. So if we can pair it up with a newsletter that's going out or a bill or something of that nature, letting them know this is the tenant month for the open house when we send out the community survey. So people know this isn't just a one-hit wonder. If you have multiple public engagement, we'd love to have you come multiple times. And so we try to line up those repeat engagements throughout this entire process.
If in the survey, you could mention that these are up and coming events.
Right.
And then the other one that was in the middle, let them know.
Right.
Now there will be a master plan follow-up after this.
Right. And so that's part of that connectivity and making sure we're communicating often to make sure that people know that this is not just a one-hit wonder. It's a series of trying to get public input. So we do have somebody that feels like they're actually part of that table discussion.
There's village social media sites? And there's at least a couple of them out there.
And sometimes what we'll do is we'll coordinate with the school, just say, hey, can you just push out our survey? Or just let us, can you share our post about how we're going to have an open house? Or utilize the DDA's page if they're more popular? And just say, can you just work with us on these different things?
You get DDA involved also.
Absolutely. And making sure that it's not just, here's the flyer, but we'd really like to see you there. And so some of those different points of contact and things is really helpful to find those individuals and make sure you send them a quick email saying, hey, I'd love to see you here. You're a big involvement in our community. And it would be, all these would include both township and village. And so it makes it a little bit easier because a lot of individuals from the Belmont community standpoint, you have a big sense of community.
Executive Director is very active, so she would definitely get noticed on.
How often do we do the master plan? Five years?
Yeah.
So every five years, you do an update. And so at the last five-year update, we modified a few different chapters, but didn't do a whole lot of content changes. We generally recommend every 10 years that you do a major update because some things typically change significantly in 10 years. And so you really need to relook at your vision. And then 20 years is when you start over from scratch.
Add a few things too, was, as Caitlin pointed out in the community participation part, is that it also helps to have, not only a series of different modes to, for the community to put input, but through that same process towards the end, it helps us in order to get a real temperature check of what the community is looking for. Are the community surveys accurate when we meet with the community? When we have the master plan open house, are we really on track before we finalize the document? So it helps the community communicate to us as well as us being able to participate and put the project together.
Like that, the temperature check. You get a read, hopefully you get a read of what the community wants. So I've been around the village government for 28 years or so, and feeling the temperature becomes very, very important. I'd like to go this way, but the temperature says, uh-uh. I've had some experiences with that.
I was going to say, the survey, would that be online and paper?
Correct.
So they could do it both ways with a?
Correct.
Will there be cake at the open house?
So typically, Row doesn't provide the food.
Coconut. I don't know what I can make.
You don't cook cake?
Not with a baby running around.
Yeah, I get it.
I could just add a couple of items too for your consideration from a cost standpoint. We have reached out to our redevelopment-ready coordinator representative through MEDC, and they have indicated that there is technical assistance funds available in a pot for us that we can utilize. And so being that we are the engaged community, the village would be able to offset this expense by about 50%. So then that would include, you know, these other options that you're thinking about recommending to the village council. So. And also, as far as some assistance that we can give Row, at the next week's village council meeting, I'm going to be asking council to apply for a AmeriCorps member to join our team beginning in September for an 11-month internship. And if that's approved and we end up being a host community, there's no guarantee we will, but if we do get nominated to be a host for a AmeriCorps member, that's somebody that, one of the, one of the specific goals and objectives that SEDOM, which is the Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, requests of a community that takes on a member is that they're heavily engaged in the community activities. And obviously, this master plan update and the open houses and things of that nature would be an element that we would have that person be involved in as much as possible. So I just wanted to let you know that there's that other opportunity for some support help and the village taking on a more active role from that standpoint with the intern on board for a period of time.
What are your thoughts tonight?
I was looking for a general consensus on if you wanted to do, just as a recap, option one is a housing study, option two is the utility evaluation, option three is the non-motorized transportation plan, then we have the community survey, visioning meeting, and open house. If there is a consensus that you'd like all of those options or if there's a situation where you say, we want to do these two, and if there's availability to do the third, we'll do the third, I'm more than happy to convey those and then convene on what does that budget look like from a consensus standpoint?
Said that the village was interested in all of them, or the township.
So the township was interested in all of the public engagement and then the non-motorized transportation plan. They weren't as interested in the utility evaluation or housing study.
Excuse me. I have, I have an opinion and a comment on what we were just talking about before we moved on, just real quick. just real quick. On the utility evaluation study, didn't we just do a grant where we went through and did an indication of our assets?
Of an asset management plan, yes. And we.
But we did a whole, didn't we go through?
The SAW grant.
Yeah.
That was for sewer only.
Okay, okay. So this would do water and sewer.
Well, and it's not necessarily to that level. So the SAW grants have the GPSing of all infrastructure and taking an active inventory.
What's the difference between this and what the SAW grant provided us minus the SAW grant didn't do water?
Sure. So the evaluation would be talking about water, sewer, and sanitary from a master plan perspective. Where are those lines now versus where could they be expanded in capacity? So it's more talking about in association with land use, how do we have capacity to add in five apartment buildings? Or if you were to consider agreements going farther up north of Van Dyke or south of Van Dyke, what is that viable number? So that's what we're trying to help better plan for what are options versus just simply this is, which I think a lot of us already know, is that a big part's going to be the lagoon component, the sanitary. And if you do a certain level of expansion, that there is major investment that's then going to be required. And so Row's already done some of that analysis. Some of it is also making sure that that institutional understanding of that project is also then in the plan. And so part of it is cross referencing other, we're building on other work that's already been done.
I comment on that would be, if we decided to go with all three and the township didn't want to go with all three, I think the village should foot whatever the extra cost would be to do those because I think all three of those elements need to be updated. If we're doing this plan, we need to do it right. On the public engagement, we're talking, if we get 50% funding from Dave's sources, I'm more open minded at the second meeting, which is the visioning meeting. But we're looking at $6,800 for a survey and two meetings when we were looking at $10,000 a year for the entire community heart and soul project, which would have done all this. So I guess I'm looking at value because for $2,000 to have a workshop with public discussion, to Bernie's point, I don't want to pay $2,000 to have three people show up. I mean, there's value in public input and I think we need to have some kind of public input. And I think the open house would be a better, would be a better source for that, just for the fact that it almost follows the heart and soul mode of you're coming in and asking people their opinion, having the whiteboards up and getting public feedback. I'm not opposed to the visioning, but I'm just wondering how much value that really brings if we don't get any participation. And historically, as both Steve and Bernie have said, we don't get a lot of participation in those kinds of events. So I'm not opposed to it, but I'm wondering if the, the community visioning meeting really brings any value if we don't get any participation? The only value it brings us is when people come in and complain, is we offered it to you and you didn't show up, which they were playing, I didn't know.
Dave, can I ask a question? If we did the housing study, the utility evaluation, and the non-motorized transportation plan, doesn't that also kind of help you and help other people that want to come here and develop knowing what we need and where they can do it? Where if we don't do these studies, kind of like Tim mentioned, it's kind of incomplete that we really don't know what we need and what a contractor should come in and do?
I think, to your point, I think from, for the option studies for the scope and services, I think for a master, five year master plan, all three of those, especially since the housing one wasn't done in 2018 and we're going off 2012 data, even if it costs the village more, I think those are three essential things that are major components of the master plan that we need to have information on. Because all the discussion we've had are, in the last two years are housing concerns, probably the third on the list, but still it's there. Growth outside the village and is water available. And we don't have answers to those questions if we don't do the survey. And third, the non-motorized transportation plan, also we've been debating is dead sidewalks, new sidewalks, and how much value the path or sidewalk from Kitter to the school brought to the community. I mean, drive up and down Kitter on any day, especially a Saturday or Sunday in the spring and summer, and you see people walking dogs, riding bikes, doing their exercise on that all the time.
If I could answer, Chair, if I don't mind answering some of that, I mean, or putting some value to that. So prior to this, I worked to the county to the south, a little bit of you guys, Oakland County, in planning and economic development. And I used to also work privately in housing development. So if I had my housing developer hat on, yeah, there would be some value in having that information because then I would know your community is poised or ready. But prior to that, I wanted to mention was, along with the state funding programs are going on, we're seeing more money at MISTHA and at MEDC for grants to fund housing projects now. I know you're nodding your head because that's where they're going. So you're involved with RRC is already there, you're following their program, you're doing your master plan update. Housing study would potentially, I'm not saying it is, but potentially would put you in position to better receive or appropriate funding in the event that you do have a housing project that fits the bill and you have the location. So what's the planning commission doing? The planning commission is, you know, tasked with preparing and planning for, you know, the community's future. So regardless of, you know, the outcomes, it's more about the commitment to the effort, you know, if I could say so.
Certainly agree with the housing aspect. I mean, the generality is the more information data we have, the better to make a decision in terms of knowing what you're talking about. So reaching out and grabbing these things, I think, is pretty important.
The only question I have is, you said that the 10 year mark is the point where we're going to have to hit this a little harder. This is more of an evaluation. So would that be a more appropriate time to do all of these or do we do them both?
So we did the, so the plan is originally 2012. And so we're at the 10 with 2023. So the 2018 was a five year review. And so that's where, we didn't do a whole lot, we did like smaller portions of it. Now we're looking at a larger reevaluation, reevaluation.
Changes south, we're tapping south coming this way, we need to be in a position to have a plan in place and that, Steve said have the data to make these decisions because in the next five to six years, if the real estate market doesn't go bust like it did in 2008 again, there, in the way some of the farmer properties coming up for availability, you could be seeing some major changes within this community. And if we don't have the plan in place to address that, then that's on our heads.
And that is what we do. We're supposed to be planning for the future and if we don't have all the information, how can we do that? So I'm kind of going for the full boat here. I think it's all good stuff, all stuff that needs to be done.
Out there, it has to be done here, but you know, to what point? I just, I think, you know, the thing that bothers me is the meeting, that big meeting where we're supposed to go. How many people are there? And we don't want to spend that much money for.
But then again, I think we need to have a reasonable public meeting because we've got to, we can't just say, here's the survey, then we're going to make the decision for you. Because, I mean, I don't know if I agree with the whole heart and soul aspect of that, but we saw the, we saw with the heart and soul presentations that I saw 17 times that it impacted the community and we, and community input. And I think the secondary meeting, which probably is more expensive, or the open house meeting, which is more expensive, I think, I think more people would be willing to come to that than to a group talk. And it gives them the opportunity to individually give their opinion, which fits right in with that heart and soul concept.
If people know about it, I think people would come to this open house for the mere fact that ever since I've been here, all I heard is rumors, you know, Myers is coming, it's going in Bristol's Orchard. Oh no, it's going up on Dryden Road.
No, Wilcox is, Wilcox is Tumspring.
Yep. And I mean, you just hear all this stuff and then it doesn't happen and next thing you know, they're building single residence homes on it and it's like, well, that doesn't look like a Meyer parking lot. And then you hear that there's going to be one school that all the Emily City, Dryden, Cape Pack, and Elmont all going to go to rather than having little schools. Well, that never came either. So if we get it out there that, look, this is what the plan is, this is what we're looking to do, I think people would come. Maybe we can get some involvement. And again, if we don't try, we'll never know.
We have to offer it. We have to offer it to them. Most sense, looking at all of this, is open house, yes. The community visioning meeting, probably no. The $2,000 is probably not well spent. And pursue all the other options. It's somewhat of a compromise.
One and three go with?
Pardon? Yeah.
One and number three?
And two, two, correct. Or are you, oh, you're talking about the public engagement?
Yeah, the visioning meeting.
Okay.
Is, it's questionable. So that would be somewhat of a compromised position in terms of just, okay, just everything on the table is like, well, breaking it down, taking a good look, look at it, narrowing it to. Obviously on the same page. Some of the consensus, definition of which is majority.
Right.
Some people think it's everybody.
Not quite.
It's not. Yeah.
All right, so we can take that feedback and then we will circle back with the supervisor and David and Alex and I on kind of what that scope looks like and double check the different funding. And then the last step of this process from the proposal standpoint would then, a formal proposal would then go to the village council, a parallel one would go to the township board, and then those would get officially authorized. So that is the next step in the process.
So the consensus is out of the six options, all of them except for the vision?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Is that correct with the commission? Okay.
Just.
It's consensus?
It's just consensus.
Yeah. That when we, counsel, when we do present an ordinance, the first reading is just a consensus of counsel without any motions, but just everybody appear to be, well, not everybody, the majority appear to be on board with it. And but then when it comes for a second reading, it's an actual motion. So since you're just looking for consensus, don't need a motion. At some point, we will.
And we'll keep you updated as we move along. I know that the township would like to get moving as quickly as able, and so we will try to achieve that. I think realistically, we're probably looking at starting likely in May.
Caitlin, with that timeline and looking at the milestones that you have here, public engagement is blank, and I guess I just wanted to touch base based on the recommendations that's coming from the planning commission tonight, at what stage would the public engagement commence?
So typically with the community survey, we wait until like the second meeting to talk about what do we want to make sure is on that survey? We'll have some general language to kind of start us off in the right direction and knowing you as a community, we'll have some things in there that we know we want to talk about. And then typically we do it for about a 30 day period. If we need more time because of whatever event that we want to push that survey at, we're more than welcome to do it. But typically if you do it too long, then you're not really anticipating to get more responses. And so usually that 30 day window is when you get the most active and then we have a more strategic plan of how do we get the word out? How do we make sure throughout that 30 day period, we have people remembering and we don't just start at the beginning of, oh, we have a survey, wait a week, mention a survey this way, mention a survey that way, are more likely to get people of different walks of life being able to participate.
So in the beginning, you said you wouldn't want that public participation in December, but if it doesn't start till May, doesn't that take us right to December?
So, so we start in May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December. So the public hearing then would be, so typically where we would want to do the open house is typically in month six. So it's after we've talked about our goals and objectives meeting and a little bit of future land use. So then we can say, now that we've got all of our milestones as far as our snapshot of where we are now and those different theories, now we say, okay, now we have a goal, what are the top goals that we really want to communicate with the public? And then we structure that open house. What are those four boards going to look like and things of that nature?
So six months would be November?
We're looking at October, yeah.
Okay.
So all of our local community, public engagement would occur before the 63 day timeline that the other communities get to chime in?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll, we can talk again at the kickoff meeting too. I know some of my communities, they say, you know, July is a really nice time not to come to a meeting. And so sometimes we intentionally miss July. And so we'll talk about that scope and we can always make modifications as things come up. If we have five items on the agenda for a site plan review or things of that nature, we may not have the stamina to do another hour talking about the master plan. And so that's where we're going to just keep timing on and then we're going to make sure that we're plugging things in at the right time.
In regard to the AmeriCorps member or?
MEDC?
I can answer that if you want.
Sure.
So with our last, so with the 2018 update with the master plan, they gave us the technical assistance funding at the front end. And so we give them periodic updates as we go along progress wise with the RRC representative. And so there isn't a, it's not a specific, you have to spend it all by December. They get updated as we go about it, that project, and then keep abridged. So as long as we just don't talk about it for like six months, I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Well, thank you.
One general announcement, I know at the last meeting, I mentioned that Row is going to do our community education series on March 29th. That is being rescheduled to May 1st. So there will be an E blast and a postcard and things of that nature, but just wanted to let you know if we, since I mentioned it last time, that we did rechange it to later on in the year.
We're giving away a free card too. That's how we get our public engagement going.
Or a cake.
I'll be there.
I have a question for David. Where are we at with the Elmont salary?
That is a project that we are waiting for the final site plans to come forward. You know, the gentleman that was before you at our prior meeting had indicated that, you know, he might be here tonight. I talked to Mr. Eckert to get a gauge of, you know, what's going on there. He indicated that it was taking more time for his architect to develop the topography and all those other good things that need to go into the final site plan. And so we're probably. And so we're probably looking at next month when, when they show up.
Point of reference, the gentleman that stopped with the flooding at the last meeting that was complaining, I drove by that property on that Sunday and we had had significant more rain. You can get around the backside of it with that, also the, I didn't see any standing water. I didn't see any at the road or anything. Now, I didn't go out and walk on its property. I drove all around. I didn't see anything that would indicate to me that there was some giant problem out there. So I, I probably at least drive by. If there's something there, I didn't see anything.
Status of that, David?
I do not. And based on some of the information that, that gentleman shared and looking at the timeline of past heavy rain events that he was referencing, that his neighbors, you know, were underwater, many neighbors were underwater during those monumental storms. And the, the water subsided, you know, within a couple hours after the rain stopped. So I, I think that's part of the paradigm, if you will, that, you know, there's a problem. But, you know, it, I've had a couple of engineers that I've talked to this issue about and they've all said that the system did what it was designed to do. It just took time because the amount of rain that fell in such a short period of time.
I didn't see anything. Standing issue.
But well, you know, you know, as we have, you know, big storms in, in the future, we'll do our best to try to monitor that just so that we have, you know, firsthand observation ourselves going forward.